This is a public hearing before the Leominster City Council relative to Petition 64-19, Mark C. Bedanza Esquire, relative to amend Section 13-34 of the revised ordinance for the city of Leominster to eliminate one of two existing no parking zones that run southerly on Union Street from intersection of Central and Union Street. I think at this point we'll just, you know, turn it over to the petitioner who also happens to be on the Legal Affairs Committee to give us a summary of what he's proposing.
Okay, so I had a constituent call that lives in that area. There are two overlapping no parking zones there. There is one that runs on the westerly side of Central Street from the intersection of Central and Union south for a distance of 55 feet. And it's pretty obvious that the purpose of that no parking zone is to provide a clear view to traffic that's entering Central Street from Union. But there's an additional overlapping no parking zone that runs, and I quote, "Central Street, westerly side, from a point 310 feet north from the intersection of Central Street and Union Street to the intersection of Central Street and Union Street." So, said another way, this one runs from that same intersection 310 feet south, overlapping the 55-foot one. That's a, those are apartment houses. People live there. There's really not enough off-street parking. People park in the street. Recently, what prompts this is the police started issuing no parking tickets. I mean, pick tickets for violating the no parking zone. Constituent contacted me. I don't see any good reason for their, we did, earlier there was actually an additional overlapping zone there that limited parking to a half hour that we voted on maybe eight or nine months ago that we eliminated. The reason for that one, I'm sure, was when there were doctor's offices there, they wanted to keep the traffic moving. So that, we eliminated already. So this is the, sort of, there are three of them total, but this one, I don't see any particular reason for this, and truly to help that constituent. So, that's the sum and substance of it.
Okay. Counsel Freda, anything?
Yeah, I agree. As long as there's no obstruction coming out of Union Street onto Central, I'm fine.
Before I, before I go to the audience or the public, does any other city councillor have any questions or comments? Counsel Arden?
Just one for clarification.
Yeah.
Which of the two do you, are you?
Oh, the, the longer one. I want, I'll keep the, the one that would remain. The petition specifically cites the, the long one, thus, not, not citing the short one. The 55-foot one would remain.
Okay.
That, that's necessary, I think, for public safety purposes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Anybody else? Okay, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 64-19? Second time, does any member of the audience wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 64-19? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 64-19? Seeing none, I'll just go back to the, my subcommittee real quick. We did ask for a referral from the traffic agent for the Leominster Police Department. We haven't gotten anything back yet. What, Counsel Freda, your thoughts on that?
I support it, but the only thing I worry about is when we skip and then vote without the recommendations, we're going to run across one that's going to be serious and we're not going to, people are going to say, why, work for some and not the other.
Yeah, I tend to agree. It's a little bit of a slippery slope.
If there's no sense of urgency, why wouldn't we just?
The only thing I would say is, it's a, it is an ordinance itself that's being proposed because deleting that language requires an ordinance. So it's going to have to go through readings. So I, I would, the guy's, he's been in my office two or three times. He's pretty hot about it. He's got nowhere else to park.
Yeah.
So, I understand that, but I would just suggest maybe that we move it along tonight, we redress the issue again with traffic, and if it, if there's a problem, they, they come back before we're done with the readings. We can always bail at that point or amend it or do whatever we have to do in conjunction with, whatever they recommend.
Sound reasonable?
I know we can do that, but I, I don't agree with, if there's not a sense of urgency, I really don't see why we should go beyond that.
The only thing I would say is, to, to my constituent, it's urgent.
I get it.
Yeah, it's urgent to him, trust me.
Well, it's urgent to everybody that comes in here, and if we, if we do that with one, we better be prepared to do it with all of them, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, I, I, if we had another one that was similarly situated, as long as we had the right to address it, I'd, I'd be okay with that too. So I'd respectfully, I'd like to go forward with it.
Through the chair, you just said it was urgent to him.
Yeah.
Anybody that comes in with something is urgent to them.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah.
All right. Any other counselors want to weigh in on any of this? Okay, seeing none. At this point, I'll close the public hearing. Raymond Racine, DPW Director, requests that the city council amend the city ordinance to reclassify the position of water specialist into the position code enforcer and change the salary grade from an S5 to an S7. We, the council recalls, Mr. Racine, the DPW Director, was down before us on other matters and did address this issue. I do see Mr. Roseberry, I don't know, are you here for this matter? Okay. Mr. Racine was down here a couple weeks ago on other matters and did address this particular issue and did take a couple of questions from the council. We do have a letter that he submitted, and I'll read that into the record. "The Department of Public Works is looking to modify an existing position. We currently have an S5 water specialist position that we need to change as the significance of the duties have changed. We are being asked by state and federal government to monitor MS4 stormwater mandates as well as OSHA safety implementation. Municipalities are no longer exempt from this initiative. We are looking to combine these duties into a position entitled code enforcer. These are generally two separate positions in most communities, but we are looking to combine them into one position and adjust the salary to an S7. Both these duties will keep this person very busy throughout the course of the work week, but will help ensure a safer work environment and improved water quality discharge into our streams and brooks." Signed by Raymond Racine. Before I go to the council as a whole, I'll go to my committee. Counsel Freda.
I absolutely agree with this. The MS4 permitting is going to be horrendous to communities. It is already, and I think it's a great move to combine the two, have somebody responsible for that.
Counsel Bedanza?
Yeah, likewise, I have no issues with it.
Okay. Any other counselors want to weigh in on this at this time? Seeing none. Does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 61-19? Second time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 61-19? Third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the council either in favor of or against Petition 61-19? Seeing none, Mr. President, I would declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you.
I think that's it for my duties.
National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures, along and across the following public way. National Grid to install one jointly owned pole on Mill Street, beginning at a point approximately 330 feet west of the center line, near the intersection of Commercial Road. National Grid to install 40-feet CL2, JO wood pole, anchor guy, and upgraded customer service. Do we have referrals out on this? Do you know? Why does McDonald's ring a bell on this? It has something to do with McDonald's, I believe, didn't it? Any event, okay. Let me go to my committee. Is any questions or comments?
Just, the pole is actually going to be on McDonald's property. Let's see what it looks like if you look at the map. I don't know if it's, has any relevance or not.
Oh. So the, uh?
No, it says on the public way, cross on the pu, public way, along, oh, along and across the following public way. So it could be, but I would think it's on the, the road.
It's, it's probably on the road, but it's like on the, um?
I believe it's a McDonald's request. I'm not sure where I read that. I'm sorry. Would you come to the podium, please? Right, right, run that way.
You first.
How y'all doing? So it's actually Mattress Firm is the customer, I believe. We have it as 252 Mill Street, and on our petition sketch that we drew up, it says Mattress Firm in that block of property, so that's going to be the customer who's upgrading their service. But it will be, the pole will be across the street from it.
Do you state your name and address?
Oh, sure. Lauren Apolatano, I live in Lancaster.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for? All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Of course.
Okay, with, with that, I'm going to recommend granting it.
I agree.
Okay, all right. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak in support or against Again, 62-19, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against? For the last and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or against Your time, Mr. President, declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you.
The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda this evening. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. We don't have anyone that has signed up tonight, but I will yield the floor to the audience if anyone would like to address the council. Second time.
John, is Mr. Roseberry back there?
Yes.
Yeah, so is Nikki.
Yeah, did you guys want to address the council? It's the public forum. We don't have an informational meeting tonight.
No, we're just scared to have any questions.
Well, if you, if you want to come to the microphone, we'll extend some time to you on that communication. There might have been some confusion as to if you were going to speak to the council, what time you were going to speak to them. So go ahead.
I'm John Roseberry. I'm with the DPW. Part of what I'm here is, we sent out the, I sent out the offer letters for the rail trail, and in the letter, I told the people that tonight was a city council meeting. And part of it is, if, if they were to show up, you know, I could help, help them with what I know.
Right.
And also, you know, in two weeks.
Okay, so, so. For clarification, just so you understand, Communication 4 happens to be that communication, and it's first time on the calendar, so tonight it will just go regular course. Later on in the evening, under Finance, there will be the establishment of a public informational session and also a hearing to be determined by the council. So I'm anticipating that's going to be happening on July 22nd. But I, so I just wanted to make sure you're aware of how that process works. But if you'd like to say anything on it tonight, feel free to, because it is on the calendar.
Well, what I know about it is that we, we had asked for an appropriation, I think a month ago, for some, like $68,000. And as it turns out, once we got the appraisals back, it wasn't enough. So that's why we're requesting more money on it. We're trying to base it on our past projects with the North Street and Mechanic Street, and we, just, it wasn't the same. More, more commercial properties. So it pushed the price up.
Counsel Bedanza?
Point of order.
Yeah.
What we have before us in C4 is only a transfer of funds to the highway capital outlay expense account.
Right.
So what's going to require the hearing are the actual takings.
Right.
So I don't know why we would be scheduling a hearing on C4. You know, we would, my question, I guess, through, through the president, to Mr. Roseberry, is when are we going to see the takings? Because we'd want to have that hearing on the takings and probably act on C4 in conjunction with the hearing on the takings.
I agree. This is just the, I'm going to, you have the floor to the clerk, and she'll just explain what, what transpired from the mayor's office on this.
The mayor's office and the lawyer reached out to me, along with the DPW, and requested that the public hearing be set for the 22nd with the submittal of the acquisition of the funds.
I don't understand that.
Right.
I mean, what do we, without the takings in front of us, what are we going to hear? I mean, they go together like peanut butter and jelly. It's just, you can't separate the two things. So, I mean, I would just suggest, and we, we got scheduled a public hearing on this, but what the heck does that going to accomplish? Nothing. We need the takings. You know, we could always further time it, I suppose, until we have both here and have those hearings co-joined at the same time. I mean, I don't think it's a procedural problem, but we need, we need the rail, we need the takings in order to make this happen.
Right, we could, what we'll do is, the finance chair will be before him tonight, so he can make a determination on how that's going to play out later on when we go into session.
Okay.
Is there anything else you want to share on that?
No, I, I don't have anything.
Okay, Nikki, how about you?
Nope, can't.
Okay. Counsel Freda, do you have a question that's pertinent to the?
Yeah, I don't know if we're having a discussion, but there's some serious issues with, with some of those spots.
Well, I bet. There's no question about it, yeah. That's, for now, the time.
So I think we need, there's a lot of clarification for some of the people that live there before I spend another nickel.
We're not going to get into any more on, in the public forum because we can't. What we'll do is, we'll go into session, then we'll air out some of the concerns we have. All right?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Actually, we won't be. Actually, when we establish the hearing, if we do, there'll be discussion on the floor at that point.
At that point.
Tonight, yeah. Okay. Counsel, I can't take anymore. Okay, would anyone else like to address the council? Second time, third and final call. Nikki?
I'm sorry. Did you want us to stick around for the questions at that point?
Use the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you, um, did you want us to stay to answer questions tonight, or no? You guys are all set for this evening? I was just making sure.
We're not, we're not in a position, we don't have everything in front of us at this point.
Yeah, I was just making sure we didn't head out without here.
So we will not be recessing to ask, we'll, we'll find, we'll figure out what we need.
Perfect.
And then we'll let the clerk work, work with the mayor's office.
Yeah.
Tomorrow to, to move forward with that for the next meeting.
Perfect. Just making sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council? Second time, third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, the scheduled meeting for July 8th of the city council is now in session. Please stand and join me to salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, united, unified, equal, liberty, and justice for all.
We'll begin with the roll call vote of the honorable members of the city council, beginning with Councilor Frieda.
Present.
Councilor Dobrowski.
Present.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Peckley.
Present.
Councilor Bonanza.
Present.
Councilor Ottinger.
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
All nine members are present. Thank you. Is the chairwoman of records ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. I have reviewed the minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 24th, 2019, and the special meeting minutes of the two special meetings we had on June 28th, and I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Thank you. Any questions on that? So moved. We're now move on to communications from the may, beginning with communication one, Madam Clark.
C O one, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $11,000 to the police department expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication one is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication one. We're now move on to communication two.
C O two, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $65,000 to the highway capital outlay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication two again is referred to the chairman of finance.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication two. Communication three.
Communication three, just as a premise, this will need to be amended due to typographical error. It currently reads, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that the attached loan order for $3,000 be adopted for the police station planning and owner project manager. It's gonna be amended if we get a motion to $3 million.
To $3 million.
Mr. President, I'd move that we amend C dash O three to read $3 million as opposed to $3,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilor David Cormier, all those in favor of the amendment, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, communication three has been granted. Does the chairman have a recommendation?
Amended, amended, Mr. President. The recommendation is regular course as its first time on the calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication three as amended to $3 million. Thank you. Communication four.
C O four, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $83,100 to the highway capital outlay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication four is referred to the chairman of finance.
Yes, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course. I understand there's been some discussion about a request to schedule a public hearing in conjunction at C O four. I think it'd be more appropriate that we provide an opportunity for a public informational meeting relative to the rail trail project in conjunction with C dash O four and potentially additional legislation coming down relative to takings.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
So, regular course is the recommendation.
Do you have a suggestion, suggest a date on the information?
Uh, July, July 22nd, 6:30 PM.
Okay, thank you. Communication four has been given a regular course in establishing a public informational session that on 7:22 at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. Thank you. We're now move on to communication five.
C O five, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $1,200,000 to the street resurfacing expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication five, beginning is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication five. Communication six.
C O six, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $77,000 to the school department expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Communication six is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication six. Communication seven.
C O seven, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $10,000 to the election and registration expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
Again, communication seven is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on communication seven. Nothing under the emergency preamble?
No.
Why are you pointing? I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
I see you, I apologize.
Through the chair to the finance chairs, there, is there a reason why all this is coming out as stabilization and not free cash?
Free cash is, evaporates as of July 1. So, after, as of July 1, it's not available.
Is that something new that's?
No, that's the way, that's the law. I mean, if you don't use it, if the excess deficiency is not used by the end of the fiscal year, it's not available. It'll be, anything that was left in that account would be essentially come free cash in the following year when it's certified, following fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Councilor, councilman?
Yes.
Thank you. We now move on to petitions, first time on the calendar, beginning with?
One.
One dash twenty.
One dash twenty, National Grid, request to install one singular owned pole on Pleasant Street, beginning at a point approximately 45 feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Cottage Street, and continuing approximately 25 feet in the northwest direction. Remove pole from private property behind fencing that is inaccessible and move pole to sidewalk before a bridge. This is also to correct for a leaning pole, which brings conductors too close to a house, number 99-101 Pleasant Street.
One dash twenty is referred to the chairwoman of public service.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, and we need to establish a hearing for 7:22 19 at 6:40.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councils heard the recommendation, ready for regular course on one dash twenty and to establish a hearing on 7:22 at 6:40 PM in the council chambers. All those in favor of the hearing date and time, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, the hearing has been established. Thank you. We're now move on to matters before the city council. We have a financial report. Mr. Chairman of Finance, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. We have a typographical, if you have the printout here, that beginning balance date should be July 1st, 2019, not 18. And the beginning balance of the stabilization fund on that date is $19,863, I'm sorry, There's been no additions thus far in the days elapsed since July 1. There are pending before us $1,446,100 worth of potential appropriations. If all of those are ultimately approved, the new balance of the stabilization fund will become $18,417,242.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any questions on the financial report? If not, thank you very much. We're now move on, on to finance, on to finance, beginning with communication one sixteen. Is the chairman ready to report?
One sixteen, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $17,200 to the emergency management agency expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This was granted with an emergency preamble at our last meeting. Charter requires a ratification vote this evening. Be my recommendation to ratify, I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you, third member.
I also agree.
Thank you. Please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation of finance, Mr. President, is to ratify C one sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation, ready to ratify communication one sixteen. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, ratification has taken place on communication one sixteen. Thank you. We're now move on to communication one seventeen. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C one seventeen, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $250,000 to the highway capital outlay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Once again, this was granted with an emergency preamble at our last meeting in June, and ratification vote is required this evening. Be my position to ratify, I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you, third member.
I also agree.
Thank you. Please requalify.
The unanimous recommendation is to grant C one seventeen, or, sorry, ratify C one seventeen, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation, ready for ratification on C one seventeen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, ratification for communication one seventeen has taken place. Thank you. We're now move on to communication one eighteen. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C one eighteen, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $400,000 to the school department expense account, same amount to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue. Again, passed by an emergency preamble in June, requires ratification. Mr. President, I'm just gonna assume, because all of these have been passed already, that my committee, with the, with the consent of my committee, rather than go to their, to them each time, that it's a unanimous recommendation to ratify. If there's any issues, I'm sure my committee will speak up.
Very good, thank you. Councils heard the recommendation, ready to ratify communication one eighteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote eight to one, ratification is taking place. Thank you.
Who's the one?
We're now, Councilor Frieda. We're now move on to communication one nineteen. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C one nineteen, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $75,000 to the refuse disposal expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This was granted with the emergency preamble at a special meeting. Ratification is required. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to ratify C one nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation, ready to ratify communication one nineteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, ratification is taking place. Thank you. We're now move on to communication one twenty. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C one twenty, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $220,000 to the school department expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Once again, was approved with an emergency preamble, ratification is required. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to ratify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation, ready to ratify communication one twenty. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, ratification for communication one twenty has taken place. Thank you. We're now move on to communication one twenty-one. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C one twenty-one, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $36,000 to the election and registration expense account, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Once again, granted with an emergency preamble at our last meeting, ratification is required. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to ratify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation, ready to ratify communication one twenty-one. Again, are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, ratification for C one twenty-one has taken place. Thank you. We're now move on to communication one twenty-two. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C one twenty-two, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $20,359 to the police department salary and wages account, same amount to be transferred for collective bargaining expense account. This was granted with an emergency preamble at our last meeting and requires ratification. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to ratify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation, ready to ratify communication one twenty-two. Again, are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed, I'm sorry.
I'm in favor.
Okay, a vote of eight to one. Thank you. We're now move on to communication one twenty-three. You ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C one twenty-three, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $25,000 to the Medicare expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Once again, this was previously granted with an emergency preamble at our last meeting. Ratification is required, and the unanimous recommendation of finance is to ratify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation, ready to ratify communication one twenty-three. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, ratification for one twenty-three has taken place. Thank you.
Mr. President, can we go back to one twenty-two?
I'd be glad to.
Was my vote counted as a negative?
As a negative.
Yeah, no, I was a positive. Just the reflexes of, so.
It's wonderful.
Wow.
So, that should've been a nine zero vote.
A nine zero vote, okay.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta keep up.
Mr. President, as well.
Okay, so, hold on one second. So, see, communication one twenty-two, for the record, is a nine to nothing.
Do we need to reconsider the vote?
To be on the safe side, let's do it. To be on the safe side, let's do it.
I move to reconsider.
In a quick, quick fashion, asking for reconsideration.
I move to reconsideration.
Second on that, thank you, second by Councilor Shalfo Zephyr. Any questions on that? Okay, very good. We're gonna revote on communication one twenty-two. All those in favor of the recommendation to ratify, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, ratification is taking place. Thank you. We're now move on to communication one twenty-four. Go ahead.
I just, I wanna go back, if I could, to C one sixteen for a minute. That's on here for a ratification. I think that was the one, we didn't accept that as an emergency preamble. We had a special meeting regarding that one, if I'm not mistaken. And wasn't there another one? Those were the ones that forced a special meeting?
Right, yeah.
C one sixteen and C one nineteen.
Right.
Were subject of a special meeting.
So, those should not have been on here, because they weren't accepted as emergency.
There's no incentive to be voted on.
Right. Just for the record.
Surpluses.
Good point, thank you.
Won't hurt anything. You can't over ratify.
They don't get double the money, right?
No, it's okay. It, it won't hurt anything.
Okay, thank you.
Good point, though, Councilor.
Very good. Nice, thanks for catching that. Okay, communication one twenty-four, you'll the floor to the chairman of finance?
Yes, Mr. President. C one twenty-four, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $4,700 to the forestry, regular labor account, same amount to be transferred from collective bargaining expense account. This was granted with an emergency preamble, requires ratification. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to ratify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation, ready to ratify communication one twenty-four. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, ratification has taken place on communication one twenty-four. Thank you. We're now move on to communication one twenty-five. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C one twenty-five, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $20,000 to the highway regular labor account, same amount to be transferred from collective bargaining expense account. This was previously granted with an emergency preamble, ratification is required, and it's the unanimous recommendation of finance to ratify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard that recommendation, ready to ratify communication one twenty-five. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, ratification has taken place on C one twenty-five. Thank you. We're now move on to communication one twenty-six. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C one twenty-six, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $5,500 to the highway overtime account, same to be transferred from collective bargaining expense account. This was granted with an emergency preamble, ratification is needed. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to ratify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation, ready to ratify communication one twenty-six. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, communication one twenty-six has been ratified. Thank you. We're now move on to communication one twenty-seven. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C one twenty-seven, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $8,750 to the sewer department regular labor account, same to be transferred from the sewer support services expense account. This breaks down to regular labor of $7,500, overtime $1,250, for a total of $8,750. The communication was granted with an emergency preamble at our last June meeting, and ratification is required, and the unanimous recommendation of finance is to ratify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation, ready to ratify communication one twenty-seven. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Thank you very much. I'm going to abstain from this due to conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Duly noted. Any questions or comments on the floor regarding communication one twenty-seven? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation to ratify, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by vote of eight to nothing, ratification is taking place. Thank you. We're now move on to communication one twenty-eight. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C one twenty-eight, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $4,300 to the cemetery regular labor account, same amount to be transferred from collective bargaining expense account. Again, this was granted with an emergency preamble, ratification is required, and the unanimous recommendation of finance is to ratify.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councils heard the recommendation, ready to ratify communication one twenty-eight. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in usual manner. Those opposed by vote of nine to nothing, communication one twenty-eight has been ratified. Thank you. We're now move on to communication one twenty-nine. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C one twenty-nine, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of $17,000 to the water regular labor account, same amount to be transferred from the water support services expense account. Broken down, regular labor, $14,800, overtime $2,200, for a total of $17,000. Was granted with an emergency preamble at our last June meeting, requires ratification. The unanimous recommendation of finance is to ratify.
Thank you. Councilor?
Yes, thank you very much. I will abstain from C twenty, one twenty-nine as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Communication one twenty-nine, the recommendation is to ratify. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, ratification is taking place on Communication one twenty-nine. Thank you. And the last one we have before us tonight, Communication one thirty, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, rounding out the last fiscal year, C one thirty, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $2,836 to the library expense account, same amount to be transferred from the library state aid receipts reserve for appropriation account. This was the one lonely one that went regular course at that meeting. It's on for action this evening. We are actually not jurisdictionally required to rule on these things, but the library as a courtesy sends them down to us because the state aid money is theirs to use as they decide. However, again, as a courtesy, the library director, Sandra Murphy, sent a letter to the mayor requesting, consider, requesting the consideration of moving $2,836 from the state aid account to be used for library municipal conference professional development. And would be my position to grant C one thirty, Mr. President. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now you have the floor to the clerk.
I agree.
Thank you, if they're a member.
I also agree.
Thank you. Please requalify.
Yes, Mr. President. The AMIS recommendation of finance is to grant C one thirty.
Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant Communication one thirty. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $2,836 be appropriated to the library expense account, same to be transferred from the library state aids receipts reserve for appropriation account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard that recommendation read on Communication one thirty. Are there any final comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to your committee for all your work. Appreciate it. We now move on to Legal Affairs. We have petition sixty-one dash nineteen. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition sixty-one dash nineteen, Raymond Racine, DPW Director, requests that the city council amend the city ordinances to reclassify the position of water specialists into the position code enforcer and change the salary grade from an S five to an S seven. We had a public hearing earlier this evening. The unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to grant petition sixty-one dash nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant petition sixty-one dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to nothing, petition sixty-one dash nineteen has been granted. Thank you. We now move on to sixty-four dash nineteen. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition sixty-four dash nineteen, Marcy Bedanza Esquire, relative to amending section thirteen dash thirty-four of the revised ordinance for the City of Leominster to eliminate one of two existing no parking zones that run southerly on Union Street from intersection of Central and Union Street. We did have a public hearing earlier this evening. I would, I would again note, for the record, that we are missing a recommendation from the traffic agent for the police department. The petitioner, who's on Legal Affairs, has asked us to go forward. He cited that we are going to have a couple of readings for the ordinance in case there's an issue with the, with the police agent. I believe Counsel Frida is, believes that we've been stepping on that slippery slope too many times and is requesting further time.
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah. And I, I don't, I don't disagree with Counsel Frida. I do think it's a slippery slope. I am going to side with the petitioner. I know he's dealing with a constituent, so I am going to side with him. But I am going to note for the record that I, it does bother me, we've been doing this a little too much. So in the future, it's going to be, we're going to need a very compelling reason for, to have my vote to do this again. Because I do think Counsel Frida's bringing up good points. So the recommendation by a two to one vote from Legal Affairs.
One doesn't exist. It's always majority.
Oh, okay. The majority recommendation is to grant petition sixty-four dash nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant petition sixty-four dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Frida?
Again, I'll say I don't disagree with this, but we've done this a few times already, and we really need to be prepared that whoever comes in and wants something done, that we've been ready to move it right to the top and bypass the, the process. We're not just bypassing recommendation, we're bypassing a recommendation from the police department to tell us whether they feel it's dangerous and, or if they agree or disagree with, with eliminating that parking. So it's not just moving it forward, it's moving it forward without the recommendation or the, the opinion of the authority in charge. So, you know, I, I've got an issue with that a little bit. But again, I support it. I just, and to say it's important to these people, I don't disagree. But everything that's brought before us is usually important because people spend a lot of time thinking about things before they actually present them to us. That's my reason for not supporting the petition.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments, Counselor? If I can go to the petitioner first?
The petition was filed on May twenty-eighth. You know, we did, of course, we're in a rush of business at that time of year. It didn't receive a, a public hearing date until the second meeting, not the first meeting that it came up on. So this gentleman's been dealing with this problem since at least May twenty-eighth. We're now in July to stave this off. This is, this is where he parks. I mean, you know, I don't know why the Traffic Bureau can't go out there and look at that sooner than that, but they're going to have some more opportunity to do it between now and the time we get our first reading. So hopefully they will. But I, you know, to me, it's time to move along.
Well, what we're trying to do, just a point of information, the clerk's been really good about this, is trying to get, spearhead the regular course process and, and request for recommendations before we even get to that point, since they are on the calendar. This was forwarded immediately to the police department. Fortunately, last week, the gentleman who's involved with this was on vacation, from what I understand, didn't return until today, but it's been a month. You know, so I'm not sure if he's been out for a month, but, you know. So I just wanted to share that with you. Okay, thank you. Counselor Bedanza, you still have the floor?
I'm finished.
Okay, good. Counselor Dobrowski?
I just, Counsel Frida is not wrong. There's, there's no question about that.
Talking like a lawyer now.
Yeah, you know, stick around. But I, we will have two more opportunities, you know, to, to review this matter completely. And like I said, in the future, it's going to be a very compelling circumstance for me to do this again. So I just want to repeat that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Frida?
Processes, we always have a meeting, so that there's discussion. We always have the possibility of, of having more discussion before it becomes the ordinance. That's, that's part of the process. We're still skipping a step. We're skipping an important step from the police department on an issue in Union and Central Street that may be a problem none of us are aware of. And I think it's important to get that opinion.
We'll get it.
We'll vote first, and then we'll get it.
Any other comments or questions on the floor?
Just, just so the, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Just so the public knows, so there's no illusions, this will not become law until we get the recommendation of the police department. So I just don't want anybody to be under the misapprehension that we're moving ahead, creating law, and then the police department's going to give us their opinion after the fact. That's not what's happening.
We still have a first and second reading.
That's correct, Mr. President.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Thank you very much. No, I appreciate that through the chair to the petitioner. I appreciate that. However, you know, the police department's recommendation is a critical piece of evidence that I would weigh in making a determination whether or not to support it. So, you know, it is putting the cart before the horse, and certainly, there will be an opportunity for the police department to weigh in later, but that doesn't help me at all in, in terms of my own decision-making, because I don't have that information. So I just wanted to make that point, whether or not they weigh in later. I would prefer to have them weigh in earlier in, in order for me to make a, an intelligent decision on this one. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Okay, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with, to grant Communication, petition sixty-four dash nineteen. I begin with Counsel Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Nay.
Counselor Peckley?
Yea.
Counselor Bedanza?
Yea.
Counselor Ottinger?
Yea.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yea.
And I share the record as yea by a vote of seven to two. Sixty-four dash nineteen has been granted. Thank you. We now move, anything else on the legal affairs, Mr. Chairman? You good?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, and your committee as well.
Thank you.
We now move on to Public Service. We have sixty-two dash nineteen. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Sixty-two dash nineteen, National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. National Grid to install one jointly owned pole on Mill Street, beginning at a point approximately three hundred and thirty feet west of the center line of the intersection of Commercial Road. National Grid to install forty-feet CL2 JO wood pole anchor guide for upgraded customer service. We had a public hearing tonight, and the unanimous recommendation, I believe, from the committee, is to grant.
Thank you. Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant petition sixty-two dash nineteen. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all.
Mr. President, just as usual, I need to abstain because this piece of equipment is partially owned by my employer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Noted, thank you. Again, sixty-two dash nineteen has a positive recommendation. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to nothing, petition sixty-two dash nineteen's been granted. Thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, and your committee as well. We now move on to new business. We don't have anything under new business or old business. We have a community calendar, just to let the community know. We have Dining Under the Stars, taking place in September on the fifth. I'm sorry. Yes?
Yes, I, I do have a few items under old business.
Are they listed on the calendar?
No.
Are they from tonight's meeting?
Um, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
As a matter of fact, one of them has to do with clarity on the agenda, specifically regarding C zero four, CO four. Anybody reading this, you know, online or looking at a posted agenda would never know that that's about the rail trail. And I'm sure, as everybody here knows, the rail trail is quite sensitive to a lot of these landowners. So for future meetings, I think we need to be more specific in exactly what the communications are about. The next.
On that note, go ahead. You wrote the agenda, so go ahead. You can respond to it.
So typically, what I do is I take whatever the mayor's office writes up and put it directly, what he says, says onto the agenda, because I don't want to ad lib for him.
Sure.
But I can definitely discuss it with the office and see if they can give us more, so it's more transparent.
Absolutely. Because highway expense account, you know, that could be, that's road resurfacing and sidewalks. So that would be, that would be very, very helpful.
Sure, no problem.
I do have a request through the chair to the city clerk because I have a couple of questions to ask the mayor and the comptroller. And this has to do with some questions I raised at the last meeting. The, the twenty-plus million dollars in fiscal nineteen, chapter seventy funds, have we received those yet? That's a question. And also, I wanted to ask about school choice tuitions, if we've received all of that funding. And finally, my last final budget question has to do with the cities, what exactly is the city's local contribution for FY twenty? I mean, I'm confused by the, the $400,000 appropriation and I just, because what the city has committed to fund schools for in fiscal twenty isn't clear to me because I can't find it anywhere.
Have you had a chance, Counselor, to sit down with the comptroller?
I have not, no.
Up to the mayor?
I have reached out to the mayor by email, absolutely, and did not get a response.
Okay, I'm going to set a meeting up for you. Tell me when you're available, and I'll get it set up.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. And in the meantime, but I would like to go through the clerk's office and ask those questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Yes, Mr. Chairman? I think I can help a little bit.
We don't really get into discussion on old business. Would you like any clarity on it this evening? It's not going to be a debate.
I do have some updated.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr? Would you like some clarity from the finance chair?
Certainly.
Okay.
So I did receive an email today relative to some information regarding the transfer of the state aid. Apparently, there's two ways that that can happen. It can happen by a physical check, and it can happen by, by wire.
Sure.
The city has always, like most cities in the Commonwealth, gotten it by wire. Without, it's, there's sort of a complex explanation to this, but without the city's affirmative doings, somehow that got changed to a check transaction as opposed to a wire transaction. City has not received the check. City was not expecting a check. City was expecting a wire. The state has responded affirmatively. If the city doesn't have the check as of tomorrow, July ninth, that they will cancel the check and wire the money. So that is being addressed.
Thank you very much.
You can still ask the question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, absolutely, no. Thank you very much. I appreciate that through the chair, and then through the chair to the city clerk. I still would like to ask that question. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Anything else on old business? Counselor Frida, go ahead.
Just a quick note, I want to clarify my position on C one eighteen on the school funding, $400,000. I'm certainly not opposed to giving that to the schools, but I do have a concern or actually a question as to how we could put $400,000 into anticipation of, of chapter seventy money. So I just want to.
You want us to refer that to the superintendent or the comptroller?
No, I just, I asked that question at the last, when we talked about it, the budget, and it wasn't clearly answered. I don't think we can, I don't understand how we can actually appropriate money in anticipation of something. I mean, it, that's.
You're the floor to the chairman of finance.
We didn't do that. We, we did, it was alternative, leaving out the fact that the primary source of the funds was 2020 revenues. So if in fact, the money does in fact get appropriated through chapter seventy, or we get it through chapter seventy, it'll be funded that way. If we don't, there is a clear revenue source, which is 2020 revenues. So either way, the money will be there.
Okay.
Through the, through the chain, right?
You, you know.
Well, I don't think that's an accurate explanation.
All right.
You might not like it, but that's the explanation.
I didn't say that. I said I didn't think it was accurate. I didn't say that.
Well, it is accurate. That's exactly the way it came down.
I can't respond, so.
Okay. Community calendar's not looking at great right now, but I need to get back to it. We do have a lot, and, and the reason is, there's a lot of people that are looking for things to do around town, and we have a whole calendar. It's, it's not listed chronologically in order, but we have Dining Under the Stars in September on the fifth, Food Truck Festival the thirteenth of September, Citywide Yacht Sale on the fourteenth, Johnny Appleseed Festival the twenty-first, Farmer's Market on Saturday days from nine to one, Colonial Band Concert, I believe, starts tomorrow night, Johnny Appleseed Craft Beer Festival on August third. We have the Ladies Night Out on August eighth, and Kids' Day on August twenty-fourth, and this meeting is over. Thank you. Done? Okay.[1732.76]